Okay, all right, are we ready to go? You guys go? Okay. So I'd like to call a meeting today of the Regional School Committee, July fifteenth, eight oh six AM. On the phone, we have Michael Lee, Vice Chair, and Richard Robinson, member of the Regional School Committee. Both have been unable to attend the meeting in person, and per our previous vote, we have are able to include them via telephone. So, Richard, you can hear us, right?
Perfectly.
And Michael?
Yep.
Okay, great. All right, so our primary order of business today is to discuss the RFP that is under discussion for issuance by the Regional School District for a cell tower to be constructed on the regional campus. So I can update everyone on where we are. The school committee members have received from Attorney Bill Solomon a draft of the RFP. We received it last night. Unfortunately, later than hoped for, but we have a few copies of the proposal for some of the members of the audience here. Everyone should have received it. It, I believe, in going through it the first time reflects all of the items that we were hoping to address that are specific to Dover Sherwin Regional School District. It's important, I think, to note that while we were provided with a template from AT&amp;T, that we opted to work with Attorney Solomon to put together something that would be, that would reflect what we wanted as a school district and not just take from AT&amp;T their draft and work from that. So that's kind of the background of it. Steve, do you...
Sure, so since receiving the original doc last, late yesterday afternoon, early evening, we've had a ch- a few of us have had a chance to, you know, read through it. I'm sure the school committee members here have either read through it or are doing so in the process of doing so. And to Mrs. White's commentary that indeed Attorney Solomon attests that this is a very organic document that he's created, and hence the amount of time that has been invested in the product. So a few of us have exchanged some minor, what I would say are pretty non-substantive edits overnight on the document, and they really are just a lot of sort of grammaticals, typos, that kind of thing. So we have those well captured. And then I think what Mrs. White was in the process of doing, and I was, and I'm sure all the school committee members were, is going through, we had provided to Attorney Solomon on June twenty-fifth, a very detailed list of things that the Regional School Committee wanted to make sure were referenced in the RFP. Five items were with respect to site and objectives. There were another half a dozen items related to design and a few items related to finance. In the overnight, I've gone through and have found a few things that may need to be tightened up on the RFP, and I think Mrs. White did the same.
Right.
Some of those points, and I just remember some of them coming from Mrs. Graham, about, you know, access, time of day, access...
So we might go through those?
Sure, yeah, let's do that.
And then if we come up with extra questions?
Perfect. The other thing, just to note, two, there will be two documents that will go, that work in conjunction with the RFP, one of which we received about a half an hour before the meeting, and that is the actual lease agreement. So as part of the package that goes out with the RFP would be a draft lease agreement that we would expect any less to adhere to. And again, instead of using the template drive from any wireless provider, we want to start with one that comes from us, that has been created with our best interests in mind, to be able to negotiate from a position of strength off of that, as opposed to relying on what's provided by the, any telecommunication provider. So that is a pretty thick document as well, and reflects most of the items that are in the RFP, but goes into a few more items of detail, for example, on insurance and some things that aren't in the RFP. So that is, we have gotten a really rough draft of that, but we don't have that to go over. And then the other document that Attorney Solomon mentioned to me literally fifteen minutes ago was that there'll be a proposal form and requirements page, and that will actually reflect some of, we want any applicant to detail anything about the equipment that would be used on the tower. And that would include orientation of the receivers, or the transmitters, I guess it would be, what technology would be used in any more specific items. So I think that one of the things that we won't see in that checklist in the RFP are those more technical questions that have come up a couple times, but the request of any applicant would be that, that all of those details will come in that form and requirements page. So Attorney Solomon acknowledged that that will, is required of the process, it's just not in the RFP.
And that photograph that we received from Steve Riggs, is that part of this thing?
No, that, the, what would go in is...
That's for our use.
Right, that, what would go in...
Is this document.
Is this document, which is the site map.
So, Richard and Michael, it's that...
This is the preferred...
Site map from the map book that we received with four...
With three dots? With three circles on it with the yellow preferred location indicate, indicated on it. That also came last night?
Yeah.
So Dana, quick, before we get started...
Right, so to give people, if you're not as familiar with the campus, basically those three sites are what we'd be, we would deem to be close to the back fields, so the back athletic fields that were purchased by the school district some number of years ago. There is an access road that follows the gas line that goes out, so it's the dotted line that's towards the top of the picture. And you cross over some wetlands, and then in the back, there are wooded areas to the right and to the left of that access path. And then the third circle, which would be the one lowest in the picture, would actually be kind of around the corner from the two, the three existing athletic fields. So it would be tucked back...
And if, just to recall, that one is, I think, about thirteen hundred feet away, and the other one roughly nine hundred feet away?
Right, right. I think that is...
That's, that's what I...
Your memory is...
Around that.
Just fine.
Do you have that up on your...
I can pull that up.
I don't have the, I have the feet to the tower one and two as seven, eight seventy-eight and eight oh six, so that's how I just said roughly nine hundred to those. And then I recall that the other one was about thirteen hundred feet. And I just note that because we had discussions related to the distance buildings.
Exactly, thirteen hundred is the lower one. Right.
And there is language in the RFP draft that speaks to the criteria around which the Regional School Committee could determine for better, for the purposes of proposals that come forward, and it does clearly state that, you know, that that is distance from school buildings and from areas where students would congregate is a, is a preference on the part of the school committee.
I think it's also important to note that in all instances, they exceed the current application tower, or the tower that's currently being applied to, on the private parcel to the town of Dover, which is at six hundred and sixty-nine feet. So all three of the circles that will go in this RFP exceed the current application, which I think, going back to our discussion of our last meeting, it's better to be the lesser than to be the person being dictated to. All right, so that was, so those are the other documents that will go with the RFP. All right. So back to our list.
So I'm gonna jump on with, Mrs. Graham, did you have items that you...
I just had some general items. One is, overall, Attorney Solomon's referring us to as the Dover Sherwin Public Schools, and as we use that term ourselves to refer to us when we include the two elementarys, I think we should go back to Dover Sherwin Regional Schools or DS Reg-, you know, whatever version, shortened version of that he prefers to use. But colloquially, public schools refers to the two elementarys.
Good point.
And I don't want to set out. So then my next question was on the maps, which is great. And then on page two, in bold, it says, "Successful proposal will, a wireless provider, give the wireless provider one ten foot at the top." And then later, we talk about giving something else at the top to, for the safety? Can they be side by side? I'm confused as to how those two...
Yeah, I think we need some clarity, and what happened with that is that in a school safety meeting with the chiefs of police last week, Chief McGowan from Dover made clear that he would need, the purpose for the town of Dover would need ten feet, up to ten feet, probably more in the ballpark of six to seven feet, in order to put safety equipment on the top of it. So in reading that last night, Mrs. Graham, I, myself, I was a little bit perplexed by that, because my understanding is that that's like a buffer zone, that that ten feet is kind of up for the town of Dover to use.
So that's, we have two people using this...
Yeah, we need clarity on that.
Just clarify there.
Yeah.
Can I jump in here?
Yes.
On page two, that bold section says that the successful proposal will have a ten-foot aperture, but it doesn't specify that it will be the top, which the language has changed since, like, my history.
So it could be somewhere else on the tower, isn't it?
Right.
Right, it just says as part of the awarding of the lease, they get ten feet, and then, and then they would find sub colocators, of which they could also be a colocator if they chose, for alternative bands of cell coverage.
But it is understood that the town of Dover would have the top ten. That's why there was discussion last week about this going hundred feet, so the total structure could be up to one hundred and ten feet, and that's where the hundred feet would be for people leasing, as it were, but the ten feet would be reserved for public safety equipment, largely because we have a repeater on the top of one of the buildings here that has, that is malfunctioning, so for the purpose of, it speaks to one of the objectives of safety, it was important to have that noted.
I have a question about that. Why can't the Dover, town of Dover's ten feet be included in the hundred feet? Because I thought you said last meeting that I was at, that you were initially thinking of ninety, but let's round it up to a hundred to keep the math simple. Why can't we just have it be a hundred total and...
Could be. When, when we were having discussion, and of course, when we, when I was having personal discussions with the cell tower attorney, we need to put something in the document here if the Regional School Committee decides they want to max this out at a hundred, and then really have ninety be marketable, as it were, and have the ten be for safety. That's absolutely, it's a quick edit in the document, we could do that, if that's the will of the committee, for sure.
Well, I think that if indeed public safety needs six to seven, we could certainly go back to a hundred max and have it be eight, which is ninety-two, which is exactly what the current applied tower is for. So we'd be very consistent with the current application if we went to a hundred max and gave eight to public safety.
So ninety-two for marketable? Ninety-two is on marketable.
Which is exactly what... Uh-oh. Michael, are you still there?
I'm still here, so that must be Richard.
We lost Richard. Okay, we'll try and get Richard back. Maybe Richard has bad cell coverage.
Maybe it's on campus.
Can you, can you all go down?
No, I think we'll be okay. Michael, you're still there, right?
I am.
Okay, we're putting you on hold.
Okay, hold on one second.
That's when it goes on voicemail.
As long as he knows he's...
But...
Is it Steve Riggs that increased it, or was it just the school committee that increased it for convenience purposes, the height?
No, we just, we did after that, that was the school security meeting, and then the...
You know, why don't you, why don't you just get Michael on, and I'll try Richard, we'll try Richard via cell.
Michael?
Do I need to drop off?
No.
Yeah, well, I think so, because we're ready to reca- we'll reconnect with you in a moment.
No, no, keep Ri- keep him on.
No, but we've got to get rid of the...
We just tried to get Richard back on, but we gotta get rid of the hangups.
I don't hear the busy anymore.
Yeah, it's not busy.
Okay, let's try, we'll try him, hold on one second. I'll never forget Richard's cell phone number.
His wife's...
He's probably, he's still connected.
Hello?
Hi, we lost you, we're putting you back on.
Hold on one sec.
Okay, Michael?
Michael and Richard, you there?
Yep.
Okay, so the, the question that, I don't know if you, if you heard all of that, but the question was, originally, we've been talking about a hundred-foot tower, the current draft of the RFP has one ten in order to give a hundred, give ten to the municipal public safety, and that are, the discussion on the table, should we go back to one hundred, with eight of it being for public safety, which would put us at ninety-two, which is exactly the same height as the application tower currently in front of the town of Dover. Do you have any comments on that?
So I understand they just completed, just eight, and said, I don't know, I actually didn't, I was going to ask, I said, I don't see a reason not to do that, if it makes the whole thing more attractive, you know, minority members.
That way it's comparing up, it's not...
Right. So you'd be in favor of the hundred max with ninety-two for commercial?
I would be in favor of a hundred and ten, if it makes the whole thing more attractive.
Right, so, because one of the questions, I don't know the, the topography back there, if the, if in order, if in order to adhere to our farthest from the school criteria, if the, if the land, I, no, I guess it's consistent with the field, so it doesn't drop there. It drops behind the wall.
Yeah, yeah, behind the wall. Why don't we, if it's okay with the school committee, we could run it by Steve Riggs and say, you know, just from the...
Would it make a...
Would it make a...
Right, from the applicant's perspective, does that hundred versus a hundred and ten make a difference?
Right.
If it doesn't make a difference?
Well, it probably, I think the higher you go, the better it is. I think that's Richard's point, is it makes it, the higher it is, the more commercial value, because the signal goes farther.
Right, but if they're already content at ninety-two, as you say, why would we need to give them more?
Right, that's the question.
That's right. I mean, that's what's on the table now, is the ninety-two, yeah, so...
Michael, do you have a thought?
Well, aren't, well, aren't we trying to get a vote on this today?
Yes.
So how can we leave something to be figured out?
Well, we put that in our motion.
Okay. I'm just trying to clarify. It seems like if the other one was at ninety-two, then we add our safety stuff, and then that's our height.
Yep, okay. All right? All right.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
I'm Ken Winter from Snow Street, but Dana mentioned preempting the other tower, which would be closer to the school. What, I speak as somebody concerned about the tower and opposed, I think, to building it at all, but what's, what assurance do we have that the other tower would be preempted if we built the tower on school grounds?
The, um, the town of Dover, the zoning board of appeals in the, have continued their evaluation of the application that's currently in front of them, so that we could pursue this opportunity. If the Regional School Committee did not move forward with an RFP, I believe that that application will proceed and probably favorably given the leverage that AT&amp;T has through the FCC for a gap in coverage. So it's our belief that it will go up no matter what, and that's the, the, we're operating under the, that information, that we, if it's going to go up, we'd rather have control of it in our property than be a next-door neighbor with no control.
But is also your belief that if one went up here, that the Dover committee would not approve of that one?
Correct, that, correct.
And there's also a cell tower proposal on Farm Pond, which I believe will now probably move forward as well.
Will not move forward.
Will.
Will move forward.
Well, no, if, if our, if action is taken...
That will move forward no matter what, if this meeting goes.
No, I don't, I don't think that will. That was actually tied up, there was some litigation issues around that.
I guess we don't know.
Yeah.
Is the short answer to that.
About, about that other one, right?
Yeah, it'd be, I think we, we have better insight into the one that's next to us, we, I don't think we have insight into the Farm Pond. I'm sure you could see either way.
Okay, thank you.
Let's get through Claire's, and then, unless you have something on that specific...
Well, I don't know yet.
No, no, no.
Okay.
On page eight, where it talks about the compliance testing, just some background as to why those locations, and as opposed to any other, and I'm not asking for any particular reason other than to know that.
I believe, but I believe these were from Steve Riggs after what he had a lot of studying on his part, but we can certainly compare them.
I think it's also...
I could say that I actually put those in the...
Right, I think, I was gonna say, I think it was Mr. Lessen's question.
So... With... I'll explain to you why I picked them, if anyone's to know.
Yeah, I, and if they were yours, Michael is...
Yeah, I, I look familiar today, so I can't say it word for word. I guess Michael, less a Forest Street, Sherwin. I was just trying to find some points that were the, basically points on the middle school and the high school that were closest to where the towers might be, and just choose, I think at the time, was just do classrooms as opposed to just the gym, that were the closest points. And the cafeteria was just to see, pick another point, or on the campus where a lot of kids hang out, and the field was again just an outside, just to give an example of a field. We could pick any set of points, I was mostly concerned about just having a consistent set of points that everybody would give their radiation exposure estimate for, so that we could just sort of see if there's any useful, practical difference between different proposals. But I don't see any, there's nothing magical about these.
Right, so from our perspective, we have Steve Riggs, and is this something he could...
He sanctioned this.
He sanctioned this, yes.
All right, so outside the school cafeteria, are we, I think you need to be more specific, because we have the front, aside, and back cafeteria?
We're supposed to give the GPS, I think, in there, something like that.
Provided on written request.
Right.
And that's only on, next to the high school classrooms, that's not next to the other two?
Oh, yeah.
So maybe add that parenthetically, so...
Should probably add for all of them.
All right.
Pick them just so that, you know, puts around.
I think we also, I would, I might recommend that we add one more, which is on the athletic fields themselves, in the back athletic fields, because if the, if it's right next to it, I think the theory is that this, the signal goes out, not down, but I think it would make people more comfortable if that were a fifth data point.
It's not so clear that it goes up versus down.
So do you add, do you add the other fields because of that? Say again?
The other fields. I think...
And one of them is, one of them is on the Norisirl field.
Well, if you have Norisirl field, the other...
What?
You wanna add the...
I don't know, you know, if you're talking about where...
I was assuming it was a proxy for that, for any of those fields that are in that sort of radius, but...
Right.
Right, well, no, the Norisirl field is a particular field...
Right.
As opposed to the side athletic fields, which could end up being lacrosse baseball field, like the...
Okay, so we should add one more spot on the side athletic fields.
And the back athletic?
In the back athletic fields.
I mean, I don't think more is better than what I was trying to get at, if you're just trying to compare proposals. It's, maybe closer is better in terms of the back field.
But maybe in terms of monitoring down the road, that...
Yeah, that's true.
So we have a base point, a baseline.
Right, so they can't say to us, gee, did they...
Well, but these are just a model, this is just their modeling, as opposed to, I don't know if we're asking, I haven't read enough, the application next door had a baseline for what's existing, and then it did what it projected it would be with the tower in place.
Right.
And this is asking for modeling with the tower in place, and so it's just purely modeling, it's not baselining to current use, to current.
Um, the, the actual lease agreement has baselining, that, I believe, and then, but it does not specify annual testing, because we want to be in charge of the annual testing.
Yeah, right, no, no, I'm just saying that in terms of when you're comparing proposals, how much the baseline, I didn't push that point, just because maybe it's not that relevant when you're just comparing proposal opposed to having the modeling, right, it's not consistent with...
Right, but if we're gonna, if we're gonna do testing based on what they've modeled and other things...
We should, it should be consistent.
Yeah.
Are we contending that being referenced in the lease? Do you want that elsewhere?
The baselining?
Mm-hmm.
But where else would you put it?
Well, we're saying it comes out of, it's not in here, it goes into the lea-, into the actual lease agreement?
No, no, it's, it's in there.
Are we contending, oh, okay, it's in here, okay. For the baseline?
Oh, no, the baseline is not there.
No, the baseline is not in there.
Yeah, sorry, I mean, I don't think it makes a difference for a comparing proposal, we just want to make sure we get a baseline eventually, as opposed to...
Correct, that's why it's in the lease agreement.
Yeah, the lease is out of the document.
Right.
As opposed to this is a comparative. So I think that's all I have for that.
Okay.
Can I bring up one point?
Yeah.
Why, on page four, where instructions, proposal, submission, it's more a process, they don't require a mandatory pre-bid conference, which I find when you don't do that, you end up with questions coming from everywhere, at least everyone's in the same spot, in the same place, asking the same questions.
Right, and that's, that's helpful to you, because we've done that on...
Yeah, we, I think if you make it mandatory, and if they're really serious about this, they will be there.
So you're suggesting that on page four, item three, that's mandatory?
It's mandatory.
Proposes.
Instead of saying strongly encourage...
Otherwise, you end up sending out all kind of addendums and...
Right, where the last sentence you have to read are required to attend.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep. All right. All right. Richard, do you have any, I know you had sent, you forwarded several grammatical and typographical, is there anything else that you'd like to add to what you sent? Richard?
Michael?
I'm still here.
Would you like to speak for Richard?
All right, it looks like we...
I, I have not channeled Richard in here.
All right, it's eight, it's eight thirty, it looks like we've lost Richard, but we still have a quorum, so I think we should proceed at this point. Michael, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. Laurie?
I'm torn a little bit. I, I think we really do have expediency kind of chasing our shoulders, we really need to try and come to a resolution with this. There is some tightening up, I think, that there needs to be done, but for the most part, it is what it is, and I think it'll get the job done, so I don't have a lot to add as far as, I'm not gonna tackle something like this, do you know what I mean? It's, I think it'll be fine, I, I think there, there still needs to be fine-tuning before we can say this is the actual document that we're putting in.
Okay.
But I, I, otherwise, I really don't have anything substantial, other than, you know, we have the things on our list, and I wasn't sure, well, okay, okay.
And it was, there is language in here around sort of the Regional School Committee being able to pull the plug, and, you know, doesn't, does, this does not afford on conclusion that you have to move forward.
Right.
You know?
So do you, the original list that we have, are there things that...
So the only items that, and this was very quick and early this morning, duh 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 duh, and I, I think some of them can be remedied outside of the agreement, but the only one, and fact-check me on this a little bit, we had number eight on our design concerns, be sure the RFP stipulates that the Regional School Committee be notified of any material change in the technology or operation of the tower during the life of the agreement. Now, something that I thought we were interested in making sure was the...
Right, I did not see that in there.
I didn't see that last night, so if you're... Okay, I'd like to add that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. And the only other thing was, duh 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 duh, there was a question raised, I think by Claire maybe, does the RFP reflect the mitigations referred to in AT&amp;T's current application of record? That may or may not have come from you, Claire, something about...
It rings a bell that there were other mitigations, I think that Bill Solomon talked about, from other...
Yeah, I think it was actually in the AT&amp;T application on the other site.
Yeah.
Well, I could make a little comment on that.
Sure.
Yeah, it was mentioned that there's mitigation if you go above a certain exposure level, five percent of the, of what's to be compliance. From what, we never got, I don't think, a very good picture from Steve, from Steve Riggs as to what compliance or mitigation could be. And, I mean, it's obviously too late now, although I do recall trying to press it at one point, and hearing something about that it might be, you have to put up signs. I mean, what it came down to is something as bland as possibly, if there's high levels of exposure somewhere, in the sense of more than five percent, then you might have to put up a sign.
Right.
And I know that on, on his website, they're big on signage, that's one of their consulting clients, that's why they're consulting work, but, but I don't know if there are mitigation. But it nev-, but we've never gotten much of an answer, other than whether it was just that kind of very simplistic, sort of not very satisfying alternative. But yeah, that's where it came from, but they don't say anything in the AT&amp;T thing other than, and I keep bringing it up, but I mean, I was, that's why I was bringing it up, but it was, we never got an answer that it's more than something simple like that.
So do we ask them in our fee to detail mitigations?
Okay. Or mitig-, or options. The question is mitigation against what? Is how do you word it? Because one of my questions, skipping instant, you call, I think the idea that we want to minimize radiation exposure at the school, I think it's all, is it, I would have a chance to be disclosed, obviously, is it all under this? I know that the lawyer said that. I think it's all, is it, I would have a chance to be disclosed, obviously, is it all under this, I know that the lawyer said that, we have to watch out how we word it, so we don't get tricked up later. Whether it all comes under the buzzword of, of criteria two, of somehow dealing with environmental factors. So I'm trying to figure out where they go, where our interest in minimizing exposure at the school is, shows up as a, as a cue to them that we're interested in anything that would minimize the exposures, radiation levels of school.
Well, and so that leads me to site location two. If, if our preference is the furthest distance.
What is the question? I, I was having a hard time following that.
The question is where in the RFP, besides the label of environmental under criteria two, is the signal that we're interested, without getting into legal problems possibly, of where's the signal that we wanna minimize exposures in the school?
It was under objective of the RFP number two, which was, um, in accordance with good planning design, a minimum of negative impacts, including visual environmental safety and others on the public school.
Right, and I'm just.
Yeah, I think that that's satisfactory.
I just wanna make sure that that's basically as far as we can go, in terms of that kind of buzzword environmental, because there's nothing, it's not, the word exposure doesn't exist anywhere other than just saying that we wanna see the model.
That, that premise is that we need to go farther.
So, what, can you explain?
I, that, I, I think Michael's premise is that we need to go farther, and, and I'm, I'm not convinced at all. Sorry.
Well.
Right.
That's fine.
I think we're gonna try to reengage Richard, he texted Dana's. Hold, Michael, hold one sec.
Uh-huh. Hello?
Hi, Richard, sorry.
Uh, no, I'm, it's, uh, it's a technological mess. I need a cell phone tower over here.
There you go, alright, it's eight thirty-eight, and Richard's now back with us, okay.
What's, Michael, you still with us?
Michael, you're there, right?
I am.
Okay, so, um, Richard, the discussion, uh, was whether in section six, the objectives of the RFP, whether number two, specifically the phrase negative impacts, including visual environmental safety and others, gives us enough coverage to be able to use modeling and other exposure data in selecting an applicant or not selecting an applicant, depending on what the numbers come in.
Certainly, the way I read it, uh, it gives us all kinds of latitude and, and, uh, uh, you know, if there's, if there's some issue about the words, I, um, but, um, I think, I think it's appropriate to have it in, and I don't think it, he decides our hands, and that puts him in his foot, and I do.
Okay.
That wasn't, just so you know, my, my point wasn't that, actually. My point was whether
Oh, sorry.
No, no, listen.
Oh, sorry.
that just as, as long as the applicants know, it's a matter of how we're cuing them, and them, to sort of give them the cue that it's an important issue, and whether.
Got it, oh, I'm sorry.
And whether that word, it's not that, and I know the lawyer specified that we have to watch out how we word it, that it seemed unclear to me whether we'd run with the legal problems, just using the word health.
But it gives the committee's decision to decide how important that issue is.
Right, Michael is just raising that issue for us to have a discussion about.
Yep. Right. Alright, so I guess the question then to us is, do we feel that it, that we have cued appropriately our, our awareness of exposure issues and/or our concern of exposure issues?
Well, we're, we're at the point where we're issuing an RFP, we can always have this latitude to reject all submissions. But I think that's the point where we, we finally resolve on this issue.
But Michael, my question is, okay, so we have the map of the three locations, and we have two that are closer and one that's further away. If our real preference is further away, and nobody bids for that, because the one closer costs less money, we don't get what we thought we wanted. By not having a preference.
But, again, in the absence of any data that indicates there's a material and scientific difference between those two locations, I, I just don't, I don't understand the, the course of this, this part of the discussion.
Well, for me, uh, we've been hearing that further is better, and we have a site that's.
I, no, no, there, there is.
Michael disagrees.
I, I.
So we, we agree to disagree, that's fine.
This, 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 this proposed of any of these locations is more than adequate.
So, and we'll just disagree on that one, Michael, that's fine.
But we need a factual basis for, for these scientific discussions.
Richard, do you have a thought, do you have comments on this one, on this issue?
Um, I, I, if I were reading that RFP as a, as a, uh, as an applicant, obviously never having done that, I became a complete ignorance. Um, but I would, I would look at it and say, I, I can work with these, uh, I don't, I do not feel as though my hands are being tied. Uh, I'm being offered several of the sites, I will evaluate them, school committee will evaluate them, uh, and if, if, uh, you know, if, if I'm making a, an honest, uh, offer to build, we'll work something out. I, I feel that way as school committee members. I don't, I don't feel as though we are painting ourselves into a corner, or keeping, you know, keeping applicants from applying. I think it's, I think it's written away that I do it.
Couldn't you also clarify that in your pre-munitory pre-bid conference? Because everybody would be there, and it's a level playing field, 'cause that's really where you have to maintain.
Right, you could discuss it, right.
That's right, yeah.
Just to echo that again, the distance is a.
Yeah. Concern.
Alright, because by then we will hopefully have more than one person sitting across the table for us.
Right.
Alright, which would then give us information.
Interesting discussion, yeah.
Oh, sorry, Michael, yeah.
I, I, I wanted to just go back to get the map itself, the only other point I have, uh, besides, obviously, we agree to disagree about
Yes.
what little science or says about things, um, is there some reason that those, that there aren't sites further away that are possible?
The. Though I, I.
I, I have a hard stop at nine AM, just so you know.
Okay, alright. Um, I think that that was what the engineer gave us as alternatives, based on the topography of the land. If you've been back there, really start sloping down after you get past that, so my guess is that it was a trade-off between height of tower and distance. Because if you went back over the hill, I, I would only guess that the tower has to get taller, to make up for.
But it's still not gonna be, well, if it's, if it's, if the ground is lower, I'll be a little silly, maybe, and say, so the tower might be taller, but it's still at the same height from, let's say, the distance from here or some other places, so.
From this side, but from the Sherwin side, from our side coming this way.
From the other side. Well, it's still, even, even though we're only talking five hundred feet or so, which to me makes a difference. I'm not sure if from Sherwin, you would see the difference between a, a tower that starts thirty feet down and goes to a hundred and thirty feet versus a tower that's, uh, starts at a thirty feet higher. I'm not sure you would see it that differently if the ground really falls off, so I'm still not clear that it would seem that different from Sherwin, for example, if it's, just has to be taller, but it starts at a lower base, uh, or a lower, uh.
I think there are also, also some wetlands considerations, and.
One of the wetlands, wetlands are issues, yes, the far back fields have wetland issues.
I, I guess the only thing I can say is, we, we've engaged engineers to give us their best opinion, and these are what were, in their professional opinion, a balance of all of the issues that we're facing, as well as the desire to get a bid.
And okay, and the two circles that I assume that are the, those are the ones from Richard's original presentation.
Correct, right.
So we're not going very far back in the field, so from, all I'll say is that from what my, I'll just say that it's, without having the engineer here or hearing this kind of level of, of sort of, we hired an engineer, that I'll just be a little pushy and say, that doesn't seem very substantive in terms of giving me a field.
But Mike, we, we also, we have constraints about, we have athletic fields, and there's setbacks from our property line, that anything n- north of those would be literally on the athletic field, which therefore doesn't make any sense. Um, because there's a setback to that, and so we almost by definition have to go south of those, and, which is where the third dot is.
Yeah.
And then the question is whether anything further, and I, my guess is that that's just the trade-off, that they give.
Was.
Yeah.
So, Dana, I have that photograph on my laptop.
Yeah, go for it.
Oh, that was the riggus.
I'll just show, yeah, I'll just show these guys down the end of the table so they can see, um, and that's not exact, he just laid it on top of Google Maps.
Okay, and what, right.
So that's the idea, so that's one, two, and the proposed towers.
Based on.
And what is the spaces here that don't work?
That's the zoning.
Right.
Setback application about something, either wetlands or, it's a zoning issue, so that's why it can't be in those spots.
Exactly. Thanks, Claire.
Because that's the edge of the, so moving it all the way to the back here, for example.
Right, causes, there's a, a wetlands or a zoning issue related to that, that's why.
What? No, no, just getting to that edge there, okay, that's where you say it falls off, go back here.
That, yeah, from the other tower.
Right, we're still better.
Um.
Yeah.
If there's a hard done.
Yeah, I guess, I just wanna be.
Yeah, okay, fine, you guys have to do your thing.
We have fifteen minutes before we lose Michael, and I don't wanna be in a position, 'cause if we were to lose Richard, then we don't have a quorum.
Fine. Well, then, I guess the, right, I mean, then it still comes back to whether you get a, I mean, while Michael and others might disagree about distance, uh, I think it's a big deal, um, and four to feet is a significant percentage increase.
I, I can't hear anything.
Oh, I'm saying that while we will disagree about what little, what little science has to say about this, um, that I do feel that hundreds of feet further back make a difference, um, and I guess the question is, is whether you feel you have the flexibility, um, if the third site is, uh, gives you that, that you'll get a bid for it, or whether you can then have the leeway to push people to go to that site. Um, but that's your guys' obvious decision as to whether, how you get people to, to bid for the site.
Right, I think that, I think that Chris gives good guidance in terms of that pre-bid meeting. I think that were we to specify too much, it, if we were to be too aggressive on our distance, I think it's quite possible we get no bids, and then we're right back where we started,
Oh, I know, yes.
which is that it goes s- less than six, six hundred feet from the school, period. So, I think that we're trying to balance all of the issues, including that the economic business issue of we need someone to bid, or this is a moot point. And so, I, I think that we, we've heard all the, we definitely have heard, we don't wanna minimize people's opinions, we respect them, but in the end, I think we have to go with what the consultants that we've hired to give us opinions, as well as the reality against which we're working, which is that there's an application six hundred and sixty sev- eight feet from our, from our classroom. Yeah, qu- very quickly, 'cause others were.
Yeah, yeah, Sierra Bright Smith Street Dover. Um, so my understanding is that once we submit this, um, proposal to the Dover Planning Board, they will, uh, reject the other proposal, so it seems to me there's very little likelihood we would get a no.
No, they won't reject it, there, it's in a continuation, which just means that they're in a holding pattern. They have not, they have not and will not reject it until the point where we actually have bids in hand. So, yes, the, the neighbor specter continues until we have a viable alternative. And not speaking for the planning board, but that's my understanding of how the planning board operates. Yeah.
Thank you for your service. Does the school committee have an ETA, or how much time you intend to give the bidding process to run?
It's actually specified, and I think the bids are, you know, but I think for ninety days, so we would go to central register presumably, and I certainly defer to Chris on this.
Oh, sorry.
Ninety days.
Right.
I think we would go to central register today, if there's a favorable vote, that puts us in central register. I think we have to be in thirty days, that would.
Yeah, minimum of two weeks, but I think given the nature of this project, you wanna do a thirty day window.
Yeah.
Because it's just so technical, you know?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, but I, they only advertise every two weeks, so I have to go online to find out when the published date is.
I might be next to it.
Yeah.
But if we go out today, if, if it's posted out today, I, I would say worst case, it, it's advertised in two weeks with a one month window, um, for people to evaluate the proposals. I would recommend a pre-bid conference in the halfway point.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So Chris, would it be possible, there are a bunch of like Chris fill, I call them sort of Chris fill in the blanks, in here, which are things like the timeline, you know, to,
Yes.
and I think it would be helpful, maybe, the school committee, if at your convenience, you could fill in what makes the most sense.
Okay.
But it, it is, I think strategically, a, um, a, a bit more of a protract, to answer your question, sir. A little more protracted and experienced, because we wanted to make sure that our public was back from summer holiday and all that kind of.
Oh, yeah, I was just curious, it says on the cover, date for proposals, that's all I was asking.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So if it's issued July X, is it thirty days from X, or ninety days for the due date? That's all I was asking.
Dana, can I just be here for a second?
Yep. Of course.
Yeah, um, I, I, I think, um, since we have talked extensively about many of the issues that are coming up at this point, is who's the school committee to update its FAQ, so that the information that we have considered really great length can be out there. I, I think it's important to recognize, for the school committee to recognize, there will be disagreements in the community, there will be things that will just never resolve, and that is the burden of public service, that's the way it goes. I think central question for the school committee right now is, do committee members have additional concerns about this RFP? Not the final project. We still have several months in front of us to hammer out that, or reject the idea entirely. The question for the school committee is, do we have problems with this RFP? I don't have any at this point, I'm willing to move forward.
Michael?
I, I can.
Yeah, sorry.
If I were to make a motion, I made a list.
Okay, right.
I think that's where you're at, Richard.
Okay, go, Claire?
You know, I wanna, uh, what's your list?
So, um, I will make a motion, and we can add to this, um, to approve the draft RFP and attachments, uh, as presented by Attorney Solomon, with the following caveats. Um, additional input or wording on number eight, which was, um, in the memo, um, where Steve and Dana recapped the items on the RFP, so number eight, which is material change, and number twelve, which was, um, relating to mitigations.
Material change in economic, yeah.
Did we resolve the height of the tower? That was my next point.
We do, with the caveat that it be at a hundred foot max.
Okay, so.
With eight feet for public safety.
Yeah.
So we have a nine, ninety-two foot tower with an eight foot safety, um, this aperture. That, um, Dover Sherwin public schools be referred to as regional schools, or, you know, DS, RS, whatever version of that. Um, that it be identified, um, to have a request as to what technology will be used in the, um, in the proposal.
Right, that will be in the.
That's, that's a, to be added to the RFP.
Your proposal. No, that's in the proposal form and requirements, yeah, it's in a separate document.
Okay.
So I guess just confirmation that that will be in the proposal form and requirement.
In the, in the review process of the proposals, um, that we add the two identified locations from modeling.
Yep.
Um, that the baseline, uh, readings be identified in the lease.
Yep.
And that the business manager updates any dates needed in the RFP. I think.
And one more, that the mandatory, that the pre-proposal meeting is mandatory.
Right.
That's what I caught.
What about, what was the decision on the, that the mitigation is, options issue is resolved?
We have that one.
I don't think we've got as much to do there, it's too broad and vague, and we could just get away with it.
Michael or Richard, do you have anything to add to that list?
No, no.
Okay, Laurie, you have anything to add?
Nope, I'm trying, yeah.
Alright, alright, so that is a motion on the table, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second.
Alright, Laurie has seconded, sorry, Richard, she beat you to it. Alright, uh, any further discussion on it?
No.
No?
I'm fine.
Okay, uh, I'd like, let's take a voice vote, since you guys are, um, remote, I think that'll be safer, uh, Claire?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Dana, yes. Okay, um, we do, I think I need another motion to, because there, the lease document that will go with this will need checking over, uh, making sure it's consistent with the RFP, if we've left anything out. Um, I think we should probably designate at least just, at least one school committee member to work with the superintendent, to make sure that that reflects everything that we've spoken about. Um, I have a problem in that I'm gonna be out of town for the next, at the end of this week, so I'm not sure, I wanna be the one responsible for it. Uh, oh, I don't know, Laurie, are you around?
You're on.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that Laurie work with the super, sorry, to work with the superintendent to, uh, to finalize all documents to reflect what we've discussed today. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second.
Alright, um, all, any further discussion on that? Alright, uh, all those in favor, Richard?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Claire?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Dana, yes.
Thank you, Laurie.
Thank you, Laurie, that is huge. Uh, by the way, Laurie does have background in RFPs, so this is a, she, this is right, lucky for us, this is, uh, right up her alley, um, Steve, is there anything else on this particular topic?
On this topic, uh, nothing, other than we'll update the, um, all these changes here, I'll work with Laurie on, and get that, I'll slip up.
Okay. Yes, so, um, we're just gonna move to another point of business.
Could I insert a comment without?
Um, we're gonna lose, we're gonna lose Michael, we need to take a vote, so if you want to wait till after, it should be only about five more minutes. Okay, we have one other, um, point of business, Steve, can you give everyone background?
Sure, absolutely, um, the regional school district has used Scanlon Associates, and in particular, uh, Dan Haynes with Scanlon Associates as the auditor for a number of years, and at the advice of our tre- your treasurer, uh, Mr. Egger, and the business manager, Christine Hags, Christine Tagg, Hags, where'd that come from? Uh, there was, there was, yeah, that's right, uh, there's a recommendation to, uh, switch auditing firms and to engage the services of RE Brown and Company, uh, there's a, a small monetary difference in the scope of services, uh, currently, uh, using Scanlon Associates, the, the bill is on average of fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and, uh, to move forward, the RE Brown Associates, the bill would be in the neighborhood of twenty thousand dollars a year, uh, Mr. Egger, with his forty years of experience, did all kinds of research based on his vast experience with the region, recommends that we move forward with this particular auditing firm in light of Mr. Haynes' departure from Scanlon Associates.
Alright.
And there's material in your packet around that.
Right, are there any questions around that packet?
Okay.
Michael?
Yeah.
I, uh, Claire?
Uh, no, I thought the packet was thorough, gave us a great deal of information, um, well researched.
Right, Laurie, anything?
No, no questions.
Okay, so I, can I entertain a motion to retain RE Brown and Company to act as our, our district's auditor?
Beginning for, first beginning for, for the audit for the year ended January, June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
Alright, do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Okay, Richard, would you like to second?
Second.
Alright, uh, all those in favor, Richard?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Claire?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
And Dana, yes, okay, that is also unanimous, okay. Um, Michael, I think we got you under your nine, nine o'clock. Richard, you're under nine o'clock, and we did have a couple comments from the audience, if you want to hang on, otherwise, we will disconnect you.
I'm disconnecting.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Bye, Richard.
Okay, sorry, sorry, yes.
Oh, no, thank you, uh, well, I, I know the RFP train has left the station now, which is, which is fine, but taking to heart Michael's point, your, 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 your Michael's point, about the larger issues being issues to which you will return, uh, later on, I just wanted to express, uh, my own views as, as a, 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 a citizen of the town, it strikes me that the proposal is mainly driven by a desire to generate revenue, and I would just like to say that I personally would rather pay a bit more in taxes than expose my, uh, daughter and the children of the town to an admittedly nebulous, but, uh, uh, possible, and it seems to me, unnecessary risk. The other argument, which I appreciate very much, is your calculation, which Dana laid out, about the preemption of the Dover proposal, I, I, I certainly see the, the force of, of that reason, but I worry about how, you know, given the vagaries of politics, how likely that reason is to sustain itself, say, over just a ten-year period of the lease, and I'm fearful that we'll end up participating in the construction of a tower, which won't in the end preempt the construction of other towers, uh, near the school, so, those are my worries.
Yes.
I'd like to express, um, my name's Matt Perillo, I live in Medfield, so I'm not a member of this community, but I am to the extent that, um, our children grow up in the street right here on Evergreen Way, um, I would suggest that I don't think the committee is being driven by revenue, but rather safety, um, there are going to be many other cell tower possibilities as far as locations go, uh, but to the extent that your, a request for proposals is calling into question a request from a private property owner to construct a tower that will create increased commercial traffic in a residential neighborhood with children, um, I actually think the net safety to all children will be better, uh, with your proceeding with this, I say that because of the access, but also because of the fact that your tower locations are going to be close, uh, sorry, farther away than the other alternative, which would be closer, so I don't think that this is all about revenue, um, I think there is some safety value to what you're doing.
Right.
And we appreciate it, and I represent, I don't represent, but I would say there are about fifty-six or so concerned neighbors, uh, about the other application that's, that's underway, and still, quite frankly, proceeding, it's continuing, but it's a real possibility.
Right, I think, and, and not, I, I think everyone is certainly entitled to their opinions on all the topics, I think as a school committee, and as is reflected in the RFP, the number one require, the number one objective for us is to make sure that we have safety of communications on the campus, so that was actually our primary driver in the, in the RFP, revenue being, I think, number four out of the five on the list, so, um, it, it certainly is something we think about, we, we definitely, in all of our deliberations, talked about all of these issues quite substantially, and I think in the end, we've come up with an RFP that does the best we can to reflect all the constituents, and all, and try and balance all of the constraints that we have. So, any other comments from the committee, from the audience? Right, well, we thank you very much for, uh, attending, and we'll certainly be posting when any further meetings are, is the, is the pre-bid meeting a public meeting, or how does that work?
Well, it's, I, I mean, generally, it's, it's open to the public.
It's open to the public, okay, so that will be in case there are people who want to attend and hear about it.
Right.
Um, and, uh, and we will certainly have any fur- further meetings, I think our September meeting will likely have that, this on the agenda, which will be September.
September.
Seven, whatever the first Tuesday in September is, uh, in the same evening meeting, so.
And generally, the engineer should be present at that meeting.
At the pre-bid, yes.
Yes, because of technical questions.
That would make sense, we'll make sure that.